On Tuesday, February 19th, Carver Town Hall. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. We have openings on several committees. Please refer to the Board of Selectmen page on our website for listing and application. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our community prayer from Selectman Townsend.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces, in our first responders, in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Now, we reach Carver citizen participation. It's 10 minutes that we set aside at the start of our meetings to ask members of the public that might like to address the Board of Selectmen to do so. We ask that you try to spend no more than three minutes in order to give other folks an opportunity to speak. Was there anybody that wanted to speak to the board tonight? Gentlemen? If you could provide your names and addresses, please.
Of course. I'm Ben Diogenes. I live at 27 Johns Pond Road.
You gotta speak into the microphone.
Yep, you gotta pull the mic right up tight.
Because we have literally tens of people watching us on TV.
Benjamin Diogenes at 27 Johns Pond Road.
And I am Alex Diogenes at 27 Johns Pond Road.
So, we are Boy Scouts from Troop 48. We're here talking about our Eagle projects, which we will briefly explain in the hopes that we can be put on the agenda for the next meeting. My project will be a cleanup of Johns Pond along with the installation of picnic benches and a bit of a border wall between the parking lot and the beach area, so that it's just a separation, so that people don't drive too far over it. Also, it just will help improve the way the pond looks, the way the recreation area appears. It will also include the trimming of some branches around the trees and forestry of the area, just to help it be more friendly to people walking through. And if possible, we'll also be adding some new signage. We're going to be seeking, or actually, we'll be seeking permission tomorrow from both the Carver Conservation Committee and the Recreation Committee, and I will also need permission from the Board of Selectmen when hopefully we're on the agenda. Put simply, we're just going to be having a couple of steps along the way. It'll have some pre-planning, some fundraising, and then we'll be executing the project. There's some pictures on the back of the site, and the logistics are also outlined there if you'd like to read those. Thank you.
My project will be the development of a recreational area behind the current COA building. I will be making, it'll involve two horseshoe pits and bocce ball. I will be, I just need permissions from Board of Selectmen once I'm on the agenda, the COA Recreational Committee, and the Conservation Commission. It won't be too large. It'll just be the small area behind. I'm hoping to bring some more activities to Sampson's Pond, make it more than just an area where you can swim and sunbathe, and encourage those who live in the area to come down and enjoy the beachfront for more than just the beachfront.
Okay. And these are both Eagle Scout projects, I'm guessing?
Yes.
Questions from the board?
No questions. I think that's a fantastic idea. I love the idea that you're doing something to bring people to a recreational area, improving it in that fashion, so my hat's off to you. Great, great project.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think these are two really good projects, and I appreciate your research into what sort of permissions you need as well. I just was wondering, for the baki court, where exactly, is that going to be where the old tennis courts are?
If you actually flip to the back of the first page, there's some diagrams on where they will be. I do not have the capability to take care of the tennis courts, so they'll instead be in the large, there's actually an image above where it will be. It's in that large, flat area where all the construction will be taken, will be done.
This is basically in the area between the COA and the tennis courts?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Excellent. Both of you gentlemen.
Now, is it intended that that's going to be for seniors, or is that going to be for the general public?
It's for both. It is meant for, it's meant for the seniors and for whoever wants to go and enjoy the courts.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
I just, I agree with my colleagues. I think this is going to be a great addition to the town, and is with all the Eagle projects. I appreciate all you folks, too.
I'm looking forward to especially the bocce court, because when I was first going out with my wife, her grandfather used to play bocce, and he was vicious at it. The only thing I have a question on, talking about a small drainage system that might be needed, I'm not sure whether that's Planning Board or Conservation Commission, but make sure you get that squared away, because that's beyond here. But, you know, we'll definitely get you on the agenda, hopefully for the next meeting, so we can at least give you our approval, you know, so that'll be one less you have to do. But I think both of these are very, very good projects. I appreciate you taking them on.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before you, I thank you, Alan, for that comment. That might be a, the drainage space, it might be a DPW Operations and Maintenance Department issue. I'm not sure either, but yeah, might want to look into that as well.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if you're seeing Conservation and so forth, they probably can help with some guidance there as well. And would you please be sure to let us know when the bocce court is done, because I'm now going to publicly challenge Selectman Dunham.
Hit the pelini.
A contest. And I don't think he's, it's a buzzsaw you're running into here, Alan.
Yeah, just like you and the Mr. Ward with your, with the shot put.
The shot put.
You ain't got a prayer.
All right.
Quick question. You mentioned you were going to raise funds for this. What are your budgets for each one of these? Should we be looking to raise money?
I do have, I do have a specific budget. I am not sure if I've included on this. I definitely have to. But it's about $2,600, but the majority of it will be through donations, and then we'll be running some small fundraisers. We're not sure exactly what they'll be at, but there'll be something along the lines of like a car wash, or a bake sale at our school. Just local stuff.
My expenses are probably going to come to around $2,000.
And please make sure you give us the opportunity to donate as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve these projects?
I don't think we can, because they weren't technically on our agenda, so they'll have to be on our agenda for the next meeting, so we can officially approve it.
That's an excellent point on your part, Mr. Dunham.
I tried.
The thrashing may be less severe now, as a result of that. All right, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to seeing you at our next meeting. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak?
I'm sorry, you only got about one minute and a half left.
I know, I know. I'll be quick. I'll try to be quick. I'll talk long, fast. All right, you are on the agenda today. Robert Bellbin, 26 Gate Street. You have on the agenda tonight the Council on Aging Building and the deed and whatnot. I've done some research here, might help a little bit. In 1975, the Carver Industrial Development Commission influenced funding of $43,220 from HUD to purchase a community center. The property that were purchased for that building was $43,000. My assumption is the $220,000 was for filing fees or whatever, if that was going on. And then, through the following years, in '77, there was operation budget and repairs done on that building. It also, there was a community development block grant for that, for restoration, under recreation and unclassified. Marcus Atwood property comes under that for operation and maintenance for it. So, the Historic District Commission that they had, they actually were in that building at one point for their historical things. That was in '77, where they noted, that's what it was for. And then, in '78, again, they mention it about for recreation purposes. So, I'll leave this for you, but there's many references for recreational purposes for that property. I just want to make sure it was clear. I think that's where the money came to purchase the property. I've called HUD, and they don't have records back from '75. SERPED helped get that money from HUD. They don't have records, again, from that, so I try to do diligence. Been here looking for stuff. There's not much here either. So, I think that really ties in, that we don't know where the money came from to purchase it or whatnot. I think this is clear, convincing evidence that it was. It came from a HUD grant.
So, you're saying the '70s did not exist?
Hmm?
The '70s did not exist because we can't find records of them?
Well, pretty much, yeah. I mean, listen, I tried.
Oh, I appreciate it.
I did. I mean, I tried. I really wanted to find out what the application was for this from SERPED and the IDC and whatnot for the funds, but like I said, but if you go back to the town meeting warrants, the articles and everything in the handbook, can't think of what it's called. Mine went blank.
Town report?
Town reports. There you go. That's where, that's where I lead it up to, and I think this, that's where it came from.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the research.
Thanks, Paul.
Excuse me. Was there anyone else? There being none. Move on to the Class II hearing. Tony Lombardo, DBA Scrubbit Car Wash.
Representative, please come on down.
And again, your name and address?
Yeah, sure. Tony Lombardo, 5 Johns Pond Road.
And use the microphone, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, yeah, Scrubbit Car Wash in town. I'm sure you're all familiar with it as a family business, and we were looking to supplement, add another small business to our property that's existing now at 89 North Main Street. And we wanted to do some used car sales, kind of on a smaller level, and we were, kind of were researching that a little bit, and did some of our due diligence, and was here to ask for five cars that would be positioned kind of on the back of our lot, off to the side, not so much on street level on our frontage. We were kind of set back along our new fence that we had installed there last year.
All right, so you're coming before us to ask for, to get a license to sell used cars on that property?
Yes, sir.
You didn't happen to bring any, well, we'll get that right. These are the diagrams that go with the proposal?
Yep, that's correct.
And where are the cars going to be?
So, the cars would be, as you pull into the property, they would be on the right-hand side, set back towards the back of the property, where the, I don't believe the fence is located on that diagram, but where the fence would be along the.
Would you mind coming?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Just tell me where that is?
Yeah, because I'm getting totally lost.
So, where you pull in, yeah, so where you pull in here, this is actually the entrance and the exit.
Mm-hmm.
Where you pull in here, this is the entrance. This is all grass. Some is stone, some is grass, and on the property line, we have a white fence that curves around. So, they would be on this little.
I guess I, when I'm pulling in, I just never really thought there was much to the other side.
Yeah, yeah, there is, yeah. It must be, I'm not even too sure, maybe 150 some odd feet before you even get towards the entrance here.
Yeah.
So, it'd be on this back, not kind of on the street at all, but kind of back there. And we actually think it would look kind of nice there.
What kind of visibility from the street? Obviously, you'd want it to be visible from the street.
Yeah, actually, from coming, going south on 58, it would have some visibility back here, but coming from, if you were going north, it really wouldn't have that much visibility until you were to, you know, pass by the entrance.
Okay. Does everyone see where that was? Dave, up this way?
Yeah, I got that.
Did you see it? Go ahead. Thank you. Go ahead, Alan.
Yep. I'm going to go away from the gentleman to sit back down.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Does this have to also go before the Planning Board?
I wasn't aware, if it needs to, I wasn't aware of.
Sarah, do you know?
I think it does, because you're doing outdoor display.
Okay.
Yeah.
Also, because we can't see it on here, I would feel a lot more comfortable if we had a diagram that showed where these cars are, because I'm a little concerned if you end up with, if you have too many cars right near that curve where it's first coming in, you may be impacting any firefighting apparatus or emergency vehicles that have to come in there in the case of, you know, an emergency, heart attack, somebody gets injured, so they've got to get an ambulance in there, police cruisers. So, I'm, you might want to at least check with the fire department.
Sure.
To, to make sure you're not going to be cutting on, cutting down on their access availability.
That might be part of the, if the Planning Board, if you have to go before Planning Board, it's probably.
Yeah, a lot of times, though, they, the fire department does more than the Planning Board will ask sometimes.
It may be that the Planning Director and the Building Inspector could resolve this, so it may not be the full Planning Board he has to meet with, but should at least meet with the Building Commissioner and the Planning Director and see if they require additional stuff.
I personally feel much better if those questions were answered before we grant the license. I mean, I don't really see a problem, but with what we've got right now, I can't, I'm having trouble visualizing it. If I can't visualize it, it's hard, really hard for me to vote on it.
Sure, yeah.
We meet in two weeks.
Okay, yeah.
And I'd almost, if you could draw the cars in as to exactly where they'd be located.
Yeah, sure.
As well.
I know there was a case before us, maybe a year or so ago, where the Planning Board had issued a permit for someone to use, sell used cars, but they didn't allow them to have display.
Yeah.
And we had had some issues with that, and we asked them not to display. So, I think that, I mean, obviously, the Planning Director can give you direction on that, but I think that it's quite possible you need a, it's probably not a horrifically difficult thing, but I think you need at least to talk to them. The other issue here is that, this is King Phillips Brook pass in the, in the back there.
In the back, okay, yeah.
So, I think you probably want to talk to the Conservation Commission as well.
Conservation, okay, yeah.
I don't know how, I can't speak for them, but I don't know how they'll feel about, you know, displaying and repairing vehicles right next to the brook. I just don't know.
Right.
Is it sale, or is it also repair?
It's mentioned.
It would be sale, whatever the cars might need for repair, we'd be doing either onsite or inside the car wash after hours or something like that.
Okay, I mean, that would make a difference, too, if you're working on the cars there in case of accidental, you know, pollution, spill or something.
Right. I know from our previous car wash, I wouldn't even have known this if I wasn't looking at the old plans from 30 years ago, but there are some drainage catch basins and runoff things already existing there from car wash chemicals that have their own traps there, so I wonder if it, potentially, it might already be covered in some of our car wash things.
Again, that would be a good Planning Board con-con.
Okay.
Both of those boards, I think.
And are you looking for, to specialize in any type, specific type of used car?
Not really, but probably middle-of-the-road, highly desirable yet not expensive, just something that would look nice.
Quick turnover.
Yeah, quicker turnover, but not, not cheap, just so it.
Right.
You know, we would like it to enhance our appearance at the car wash as opposed to take away from what we have going there.
Okay. Again, we meet again in two weeks, so if you can have things resolved, if you can get that to us before the end of the week before we meet, because we have to get the agenda out on the Friday before the Tuesday that we meet. So, that'll be, what, March 4th, 5th? March 5th, I think it is?
March 5th is our next one.
So, we're meeting March 5th, so if you get it to us on the Friday before March 5th, then we can get it on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, and I'll try to take care of, I'll speak to who I need to speak to on the Planning Board, or was it somebody in the Building Department you said as well?
I want to talk to Stephen Cole, the Planning Director.
Okay.
And the Conservation Commission.
Okay, that's right, yep. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We table this item until our March 15th meeting.
A second. Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. All right, 7:20, we move on to, it's almost 7:20 on the nose.
How about that?
Administrator update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Last week, we had a joint meeting with the School Committee and with the Superintendent and Business Manager, and with that, we went over the updated budget for 2020, which included a 2.44% increase after fixed cost. That is the equivalent of $580,000, more for the School Department, and $245,000 for the Town Department. What we also discussed at that meeting is that even with that forecast, right now, our state aid, our net state aid coming to Carver is, for education purposes, is down $63,000. So, we do have a deficit in our budget. I'm confident that over the next month or two, that we'll be able to resolve that. This is also based upon the House One budget from the Governor, and historically, we generally do have, the Senate and/or the House do tend to raise those numbers a little bit, so I anticipate that some of that will be taken care of by that point. And then finally, our health care currently, right now, is budgeted a 9% increase year over year, and that is incorporated in the 2.44% that goes to each depart, each school in town, because we actually fund our health care between the School Department and also in the town piece. So, I don't know if anybody else wants to comment from that meeting, but I think you guys had some great dialogue at that discussion.
Mr. Chairman, through, I just want, is that 9% solid?
It's solid as of our last meeting. There may be a slight chance it may go down a little bit, but I think that that's a very good budget number at this point.
Okay, and we've got to be careful on the, you know, saying that the House and Senate sometimes give a little bit more than the Governor, because I remember one year, we got hosed by the, by the House, and they nailed us.
Yep.
Is that a technical term, hosed?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's also extremely accurate.
I think the only thing I had mentioned is that we noted that the student population had not changed significantly from 2016 to today. However, the state contribution had not, had hardly budged. If the state had been increasing at about a 2% rate of inflation since 2016, the schools would have an extra $1 million in their budget to work with. But that has not taken place. In fact, I think the money is actually down from 2016 that we're getting from the state, and so consequently, that's a big part of why we're having the struggle that we're having, because it's shifted the burden onto the Carver taxpayers and away from the state. So, I think that's a takeaway that we got from the meeting as well.
And just to get a little more detailed on that shift, 20 years ago, the state through Chapter 70 funded 60% of our school cost. Today, it's now 16% less. They fund 46%, I'm sorry, 44% of our school cost. That shift has gone directly onto the town side, which over that timeframe is the result of about a $4 million shift that the taxpayers are having to pick up and put into the school system, because the state's contribution is less, which now means that, you know, there's less services that can be offered in Carver. And I think what's, what's important and to emphasize is how we're able to do that is Carver has a call-fire department. In a town like ours, their budget would be $2.6 million, and Carver at $600,000, and they do a yeoman's job in protecting the town. In addition to that, our EMS department that provides 24/7 ALS ambulance, two ALS ambulances as needed, currently costs the town zero. And without those two departments that provide volunteer services with exceptional quality, it would be a struggle for the town to actually be able to afford everything that it's affording right now. Again, you know, you can look at and argue about the numbers year over year, but you have to figure out what's causing the change. And, you know, as the chairman mentioned, you know, the state's contribution percentage-wise has gotten less and less every year. And specifically, if we go into our budget that we've been doing right now for our net state aid, for the last five years, four years, it's been dropping, our net state aid has been going down. Now, interestingly enough, on the non-restricted, which is on the town side, it's actually been going up, and the education's been going down worse, but because we blend the rates together, then it's a net state aid, which is how we deal with, to take away some of the fluctuations. So, that's, that's kind of where we are from the budget process at this point. Any questions on that? Next item is the Police Station and Recreation Complex update. Currently, that is now scheduled for the CPC meeting on February 28th. This would be a public hearing, be held in this room at 7 o'clock by the CPC Committee, where the Recreation Committee will be making a presentation to request $600,000 for Phase One of the project that they have approved and submitted to the CPC.
That'll be signbook cast on Area 58?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Next thing I want to do is just, although it's still in draft form, but there's been some, some conversations regarding the warrant, and a couple of things that I wanted to draw to your attention based upon feedback that we've received. I think last year, we had 15 articles. This year, there's been a request not to bifurcate as many articles, and now we're up to 25 articles. That may change one or two, just based upon whether some committees decide they're going to pull their article back. I will have a draft for you at our next meeting, so we've expanded from that standpoint. Secondly, where we've had different Parts One and Part Twos, kind of eliminated a lot of that stuff, and also, in each one of the articles, there was a request to, you know, have the language in there or take any other action related thereto, so that has been included in the articles. One of the things that I am going to suggest, which is out of our normal cadence and process of how we do our warrants, is we normally start with accepting any town reports, followed by that, we do any type of mid-year adjustments we have to do if there's money we have to move into one budget versus another that was approved at the last town meeting, such as snow removal or something like that, is usually kind of our second article. From there, we go into our free cash article, followed by our budget article, followed by our capital outlay article, followed by our CPC article, and so forth. What I'm going to suggest, and again, which is different, is that I'm going to suggest that the first article of town meeting be the CPC article to allocate the $600,000 to the playground. That seems to be for the playground and also Phase One of the recreation complex. That seems to be the most controversial issue in town right now by some, and again, we have a lot of business to do at town meeting, to run the town for the rest of the residents and for, you know, our $40 million budget, and since some people will come to town meeting just for that one article, again, it's uncharacteristic to recommend something like this, but it may, it may provide people better planning opportunities to just know that's going to be the first article in town meeting, to have the debate upfront and determine whether or not the town people are in support of utilizing $600,000 that's sitting in cash right now from the CPC, and to allocate to that Phase One as requested by the Recreation Committee. So, I'm kind of looking for a little feedback on that particular item, whether or not you think that's a good idea to have it as number one, or otherwise, it would probably be about Article Eight or Nine after the CPC article.
Mr. Dunham?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just proviso is if the CPC goes ahead and recommends and asks for it. I mean, if it's not, then fortunately, we'll know well enough, we'll know by the 28th if that's going to happen, then we can go ahead and go into this. I personally don't see a problem with it. I've always shuddered a little bit about, you know, some of our stuff we know are going to definitely bring, have a hefty discussion with it and have it later in the meeting itself. On the other hand, I really get irate personally when people get their one article done and up and out the door they go.
Yeah, that's, that's actually my thought process, is that we're sort of catering to people that are coming there just for the one article, and then they're going to take off. So, I mean, I'm glad you bring it. So I mean, I'm glad you bring it up now, we can discuss it at the next meeting, because I, you know, I can understand the thought process. I just hesit, I've got to think about whether or not I want to comment, because I do remember last year for the, getting the new artificial football fields in, everybody, you know, the place was packed, and soon as we did that article, it was almost empty, so that...
It's a double-edged sword, and that's why it's more of a policy discussion than we have at the next meeting, but I just wanted to bring that up to you, because, you know, there's pros and cons each way.
Yep, yep.
And the other thing, Mr. Chairman, is because part of that discussion is the format, and that's getting to the bundling, because I kind of figured the first year, when I'd be airing the most complaints about the bundling, and as people got used to it, you'd think there'd be less and less, I'm finding just the opposite. Every year, I'm having more and more people come to me saying, "Why are we bundling so much?" So I really, you know, I'm an advocate of decreasing the bundling.
Well, and I think last year, what ended up happening is that we ended up unbundling, but we ended up adding a half-hour debate in order to unbundle. So that's what, but again, we're not deciding that...
No, I realize that. I'm just trying to point out that that's going to be part of our discussion.
Yeah.
And like I said, I've unbundled a lot of stuff already, but you'll see at the next draft, you know, we're up to 25 articles versus 15.
Yeah, but I remember the good old days, we used to have 68 or 72.
Absolutely.
That's right.
And we'd go to one in the morning.
Yes, we would. We'd get it done.
Yep.
So are we still commenting here?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, I agree, I don't personally like the bundling at all myself. I think it makes it very difficult for people to, who might be in favor of one part of the bundle and not in favor of the other, how are you going to vote for that? And I think that really takes away a lot of the voters' control. And I was actually going to bring up adding the phrase, "or take any other action relative thereto," because that actually gives back some control to the voters as well, where they can make minor changes, particularly to money articles. It, I don't think it allows them to make huge changes, I don't think our town council would say that that was a good idea, but minor changes...
Because they were within the spirit of the article.
Correct, correct. And I think that's very important, because it is town meeting who, they are our legislative body, and they should be able to make decisions like that.
And as I said, in all the articles here, all the drafts have that language already in there. You'll see at the next meeting.
I would add a thought that I wouldn't mind at all having that question about the recreation money be read up front. You've got to think of the audience that would be coming would probably be family, voters, family residents, and I would think to get them in and get them out early with their voices heard, to get back to the family would, in my opinion, would be a service to them. So I would be all in favor of that.
I actually like the idea of having that article first as well. I think it's certainly going to be the most controversial article, and I think it's going to bring a crowd, no matter where you put it, you're going to have some people leave after that article's over, and I personally like the idea of having it first, right at the front. As far as the bundling, I actually think that the bundling has in some ways made town meeting longer. We spend so much time arguing about whether to separate things or not.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
I would like to, I'm in favor of less bundling, and if that means more articles, it means more articles, but I think, I agree with Sarah, that I think it gives people a chance to vote more specifically on parts of things, so I would be in favor of less bundling as well.
Well, I know we had one specific instance last year, where there was a bundled article that had 10 separate items on it, which was voted down, then we reconsidered it, and all 10 articles passed. So that, you know, I, so anyway, as I say, from the old days of 68 to 72 articles, then if, so we've got to see the warrant and go through it, obviously, but...
Think about it for the next two weeks.
Yeah, in the spirit of it, you know, I think that's some feedback for you.
While we're just talking about this, the school committee is not going to have their vote until March 11th for their budget. We have a bylaw that says all money articles need to be in 30 days prior to town meeting. So what the recommendation is, is that we look to move the town meeting until the week after the school vacation week, which is the week before town elections. Again, we want to keep it before town elections, and...
Did you just jump way down to Board of Selectment update?
Yeah, all right. It was on that same topic, but...
Well, I guess we can take it up now, as long as we're this far into it.
Mr. Chairman, I move we take it out of order and address it now.
So I have been able to talk with town council and our moderator, and, you know, whether we move it to the 22nd, 23rd, or 24th, it looks like we have some availability there. I've still got to just double-check the location, but I'd recommend those three days, one of those three days, I don't know if you want to prioritize those and which order you'd like, but...
Are those a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the 22nd would be a Monday, 23rd is a Tuesday, and the 24th is a Wednesday.
Didn't it used to, wasn't town meeting always on a Monday, and then in recent years, it's changed to Tuesday?
Yeah, we used to be on Mondays, and then go, Tuesday is our next day.
Correct, that's right, if we had to go, and I don't think we went till one.
Yeah, I mean, that's probably safer.
Let's go, I think Monday's a fine day.
I'd prefer to see Monday as well.
Well, we've got to get, check with the other folks and the availability, so...
Could I have a motion that's subject to confirmation from town council and a town clerk and the moderator, then...
And the school.
And the school, that the 22nd would be the first choice. If it's not the 22nd or Monday, do you want it to be Tuesday, the 23rd, or do you want it to be the...
Then the 24th would be my personal preference.
Give me your day off if you have to go two meetings?
Right. So moved.
Okay, so first is the 22nd, second's the 24th, and third is the 23rd, and once I get confirmation from them, your vote is in effect for whatever one of those dates is.
So moved.
Second. Further discussion being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, anyone? No?
What, you want us to oppose it?
All right, can go, if you want to go back now to where you were supposed to be?
Capital outlay plan, I think we presented that at the last meeting, and there's no changes for that. That's also been presented to the finance committee, which is the next item. The finance committee is meeting this Thursday to go over the operation maintenance department budget, as well as the veterans' office budget. They do have some additional items on their agenda, including the Greens Community Act, including putting a grant program down for taxpayer dollars going to nonprofits, as well as a few other things, so... And I will say that the last finance committee, two weeks ago, went for three and a half hours, and it's probably the most intense finance committee that's happened in the last few years, is that with all the departments that were going there, there was great dialogue, great interaction with all the finance members, asking all detailed questions, fully understanding and fully vetting the budget, so it was nice to see that occurring in that process. So also, in addition to that, is setting up a joint meeting with the finance committee for them to bring their review to you, as well as setting up another meeting with the school committee, so that the school committee can present their budget to vote for selectmen and to the finance committee.
Mr. Chairman, through you, is that going to, they going to want to do that before they vote on a budget, or after?
With the...
Because if it's after, it's going to be cutting it even closer.
Yeah, so I need to find that out with the school committee. What I would recommend is that your March 5th meeting be with the finance committee to, in essence, vote the budgets as part of the whole process. And then, again, the school committee, we already know what the budget is for them, it's just a matter of them presenting how they, you know, where they're putting their money as part of the budget. So I would suggest the 5th. Again, whether or not the school committee has determined how they're going to adjust their budget by March 5th, I'm not sure if that's... No, actually, I take that back. Their meeting next week is they're presenting what their budget would look like, meeting what the financial policies call for. So they will have that presentation. They may not have voted for it at that point, but they will have that presentation next week.
So would we be inviting the school committee in then for March 5th as well?
I'm going to suggest we probably do that, see if they're available, if we do it all on March 5th.
Yes.
Okay. And if somehow it doesn't work for them, then we'll have to reschedule with them at a later date.
Correct.
Perhaps our second meeting on March...
I'll work with you for the 5th. I don't see a problem with that. All right, that takes care of that.
Again, you jumped down to the, below the schedule again.
Under that?
Yeah.
Well, it's very, we're now on the updated market sound with those, which Mr. Belvin provided for us.
So if I could, I think that there was, you know, again, was some...
Well, and if I might, I think I specifically had asked for this update, looking for a couple of things. One was, sort of, how did we get into the whole, you know, there was a whole Facebook discussion that there was, you know, something going on with the Atwood House and so forth, and exactly how did we get to that point and what actually happened? The second part was just that if, at some point in time, we did decide that we wanted to do something with the Atwood House, what would the procedure be so that, so, go ahead.
So I think the genesis of this was, unfortunately, some misinformation that was in social media, again, that the Atwood House was going to be sold to private developers. That's never happened, from my understanding, and...
Didn't some of this come up when we were considering adding the COA to the library, and then it led to speculation as to, well, then what would happen with the old building?
That's correct, and again, some people, without any, you know, information, were talking about being sold to private developers, which was never the case. What was discussed in a very preliminary fashion was, well, what are the options that are available? And as I've said before, is, under our current procurement law in Chapter 149, a municipality maintaining an historic structure is cost prohibitive, just because of how we have to deal with all the prevailing wages and so forth. So ideally, if there was a way that we could work with a nonprofit, and if the COA was going to be relocated, which was what town meeting approved funding for, to look at the library for a joint library slash COA facility, what could happen with the COA facility? And at that point, sticking with the nonprofit is, could you then turn that into some type of an affordable senior housing-type complex that was run by a nonprofit, where the town still owned the property, but had an agreement with them to run it and maintain the facility? And that led to Savory Moore asking some questions regarding the historic component of that. And in our deed research, what we found out was that, you know, again, this is for public use, the building was going to be here for, there were multiple...
That, you're saying in the deed, it specifically specifies it has to be for public use?
Yeah, and the question is that with the deed is that it wasn't properly approved at town meeting.
And what date we talking about here?
Oh, this was the 70s, it don't exist.
Okay.
1975.
Yeah. And although there was money approved at town meeting, the town meeting never authorized the purchase and the taking action of acquiring the property. So when town council took a look at this, is what they came back in is that, and what I authorized them to submit, was that since there's nothing technically on record that the town owns it according to real estate law, was for them to file this affidavit under General Law's Chapter 183, Section 5B, which they did, that in essence gave the public notice that, for all intents and purposes, and I'm paraphrasing here, the town has invested X number of hundreds of thousands of dollars into this building. It's the intent that the town of Carver exercises domicile over the property, starting in about 1975, and if anyone challenges that, they're not going to get clear title to the property. It clouds the title even more than the title already is. So that's why town council suggested we put this one here as just a stopgap measure as to what would happen. To your question is to what would happen in the future if the town decided to ever partner with a nonprofit, like we've done with South Shore Housing behind us?
Well, just a quick question then, so if we wanted to sell it to a private developer, the deed restriction prevents that from happening?
That is correct, that is correct, even though it's cloudy. But if we ever wanted to partner with anybody and use it for, you know, a public use but not run by the town, then we would need to bring that to town meeting. Town meeting would have to approve us partnering with somebody to manage the property. So at the end of the day, A, it's never going to be sold to a private developer, and B, if there was any future use of the building, other than what it currently is right now, it would have to be done in cooperation with approved world town meeting. And again, unfortunately, as we all know, sometimes these things take the life of their own when they get on social media, and that's, you know, why we're trying to clarify.
Well, I remember the house right next to the COA went up for sale, and immediately, there was some suggestion that the COA was up for sale.
That's right.
And because it was, the location was right next door to, what was that, the old Eldridge House?
Eldridge property.
Eldridge property? So that, did that sell, by the way, do we know? Is that still...
No, it's still for sale. The actual lawyer representing that did call us about two weeks ago and just gave us an update of where they're at right now. They're still doing engineering reports to determine if they can put four houses on there, and they're trying to figure out, you know, what the future use of that is, from a private development standpoint.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions from the board on all of that? Nope.
Well, I have one question. You said you were doing it to protect the town, what, maybe I missed it, but what was the town's vulnerability?
Town meeting's never authorized the acquisition of the property.
But we've had use of it all these years and paid for it?
That's correct.
So the vulnerability is...
We don't own the property.
Okay.
Because town meeting's never authorized you to purchase the property.
Okay.
I mean, it would be a slug through the courts to try to undo it, so...
It would.
Moving on then, Board of Selectmen update. Scheduled board members to tour Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School. I had expressed an interest in doing that, I didn't know if there were other members that would like to...
Can we do it during lunchtime?
Call.
No, they have a great...
That's a great idea.
Yeah, that's a really good idea.
I'd absolutely be interested. Only if it's at lunch, or...
I'm open to lunch.
Okay, yeah, okay.
They have a great culinary program.
Do we want to check with them and find out if they want to recommend some dates, and then see if they work for us?
Are there any... The menu first.
It's always good.
Are there any days of the week that are better for you guys?
I was going to say, maybe we should try to work on a date, or at least a day in the week, you know?
If you come back with a date or two, then I'm sure that there's going to be a good menu that day.
All right, Elaine, could you try to coordinate the five of us? Good luck with that.
We just need a, I need a good lead time, so I can put in for vacation time if I need to, to get off of work, so I can attend.
So you probably have the more challenging schedule.
Yeah.
Okay, so, why don't we work off of Alan's schedule to see where...
And I know for me, midweek is better than...
And I know Dave has the easiest schedule to work around.
Yeah, daylight. I'm free.
All right, thank you.
I think the finance committee should be invited to attend that also. Well, I think you should actually own it.
Yes.
We already did the scheduled date for school committee, the update on joint meeting of both boards, and then town meeting. So application for appointments to the CPC will close in 30 days for March 19th decision by the BOs. However, we've got a couple of wrinkles there that we need to take into account tonight. One is that, well, I guess the only one we're considering tonight is actually, two? All right, well, we have, one is member Fran Mello through some sort of an oversight. She was supposed to be reappointed on June 30th, 2017, and somehow that was missed. And so rather than creating sort of a problem, then what I would like to ask the board to do is to appoint her tonight to the CPC to complete what the term would, should have been, which would have expired on June 30th, 2020.
And I'm assuming we're doing this under the auspices of anticipated within 48 hours?
That is absolutely correct, because this only came to light on Friday, after the agenda was already posted, so... So that would, that's one thing I would ask the board to do, so let's, if we can take that...
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to go ahead and appoint Fran Mello as our representative to the CPC.
Second.
And through June 30th, 2020, that would, the term would have expired. Further discussion being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And then I'll let you explain the second issue.
Sure, no, and just for the record, Fran attends every meeting, and she debates every point for the last couple of years, as though she was a full active member, and again, this was an oversight that has now been corrected, thank you. The second is that when Judy Ward, who was a member of the CPC, resigned from... The second is that when Judy Ward, who was a member of the CPC, resigned from the Conservation Commission, she also resigned from the CPC. When that happened, there was no one on the Conservation Commission that at that time had any extra time to commit to CPC, but Gail Nalan volunteered to serve on the CPC.
On behalf of the CONCON?
On behalf of the CONCON. And the CONCON at the time thought that they had the legal authority to appoint anybody who was their representative. Well, in reviewing the law and talking to Bob Bentley and the town council, it actually says that the CONCON does have the right to appoint a member to the CPC, but it has to be of the Conservation Commission. Not anyone in town has to be of the Conservation Commission, where the Board of Selectmen can appoint any one of your residents, it doesn't matter. So as a result, is that she's been acting as the conservation agent, I mean, as the conservation representative, but as not of the Conservation Commission. So, the quickest and easiest solution for this, and there's two solutions, but I'm gonna go for the quick and easy one, is that what I would recommend to the board is that since you have two vacancies, you just filled one with Fran, who was a technicality, you still have one vacancy under your authority. And I'd recommend that you appoint Gail to the CPC, to, through town meeting, so that she can carry all the knowledge that she's done on this project. And the reason why I'm saying it through town meeting is because what the CONCON is also looking to do, which we believe is legal and proper, but it may just take a few weeks or a month for this to happen, is that the Conservation Commission also has an associate position that they can have someone fill. And if Gail is appointed to the Associate Conservation Member position, then technically she's part of the Conservation Commission, and therefore the CONCON could then appoint her as their representative, should have been down that road. But again, they need time to do that.
Then we'd have to fill another position.
Then you'd have to come back to fill the position, which the agenda was talking about is, because there's been some interest from others that wanna get on here.
I was gonna say, I'd like to have, you know, an opportunity, since there's gonna be one extra one anyway, making sure that we have a good window of opportunity for people to apply to be on the CPC.
I agree. And where we had on the agenda to have them be appointed at the March 19th meeting, if that was the April 16th meeting, it doesn't really matter, because the CPC votes were already done, and CPC is really not gonna do anything till after town meeting for the next year. So, again, why, appointing Gail through town meeting solves the immediate issue right now, and she has been going to the meetings, and it does open up that seat after town meeting for someone else to get on board there later on, while the CONCON fixers there.
But our appointment tonight doesn't need to have an endpoint. We can just appoint her and then make a change if, because we don't know that, we don't know that they're going to, we assume that that's what's gonna take place. But for now, we should just be appointing her, and then-
So, the only reason why I'm hesitating on that is because in my conversation with Bob Bentley is that originally, they wanted to do the conservation route. When we talked to the schedule, it may not be possible in the timeframe they need. So their intent is to go in that direction, and that's why I'm saying putting it through town meeting. At the end of town meeting, if it turns out that doesn't work, then you can come back and reappoint her to fill whatever that role is, because it's a three-year rolling schedule, we gotta figure out when that date started and when it didn't. But by doing it for now three months, we're safe, and it solves the problem. Worst case scenario, you gotta come back and do it again in April. But again, this is just the conversation I had with the chairman.
So you're suggesting we appoint Gail through what date then?
Through-
Town meeting.
End of April.
Through April 30th, until April 30th. Questions? Well, does someone wanna make a motion to do so?
I move that we-
And again, this is under the 48-hour, unanticipated-
I move we appoint Gail Nalan as the second Board of Selectmen member of the CPC, in effect, through April 30th of this year.
I'll second that, that's, that's a good decision.
Further discussion?
She's full of knowledge.
In the meantime, I'm assuming we will have, we'll put the word out that, you know, we're anticipating an opening coming up for the CPC.
Yeah, I think the website is still advertising an opening, so we won't do anything, we won't take that down.
We'll keep that going through, I would think, at least into April.
Right.
That sound alright, T? Got a problem with that? Okay.
Well, except that it says here the appointments will close in 30 days for the March 19th decision by the Board of Selectmen. It says this on our agenda.
That's probably gonna change, because right now, where we've got Gail through the end of April, it would be our first meeting in May.
I understand, I'm just saying that if we're extending it, that should go on the website, too.
Yeah, so it changed that to April 30th as well.
So why don't we put in here, application for whom will take place through April 30th?
Alright, you have a motion and a second, if there's no further discussion. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Alright, we move on to minutes of January 28th.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You never really gave the Board of Selectmen a chance to do a regular update.
You know, you're absolutely correct, you're absolutely correct.
I mean, not that I have anything, but-
Well, no, I think it's with the town administrator having jumped down and covered half of the updates under the Board of Selectmen.
So you're saying you couldn't keep up? Ooh, say you're gonna beat me at boxing, will ya?
Mr. Robertson, did you have any updates that you wanted to share with us this evening?
Well, yes. First of all, I wanted to say, I'm being more and more made aware of our Boy Scouts. This is how many Eagle projects we have seen in the last three, what leadership we must have in a Boy Scout organization. That's a tremendous group, whoever's the leader, I'm embarrassed, I don't know their names. But, and I wanted to remind everybody of the Robert Merritt Service Award nominations, taking for somebody you wanna nominate in Carver. Nominations will be taken from March 1st to the end of March, and send them to HR or to Elaine. That's all I have.
Ms. Jewens?
Thank you. My big thing's already been covered. I was gonna make sure that we put the phrase "or take any other action relative thereto" back into the warrant, because I feel that the voters, that was one of their main complaints last year. I think that they couldn't make amendments, couldn't change anything. And I also wanna give a lot of credit to the Boy Scouts as well. I've been to a number of their Eagle Scout ceremonies, and we shouldn't forget the Girl Scouts either. They're an awesome bunch, do so many things, very quiet about it usually. So, we appreciate all our kids.
Mr. Dunham?
I think I've got myself in enough trouble for tonight, so I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Townsend?
Thanks, a couple of things. Recently, I had an opportunity to attend a meeting of the, I wanna get the name right here, the Plymouth Area Substance Abuse Prevention Collaborative. And while I was there, had an opportunity to speak with some Carver students, who are part of a group at the high school called the Care and Crusaders. And they're a group working on drug prevention, they worked hard in the last year to grow their group. And I thought, looking forward, it would be a great idea to ask them to come into the Board of Selectmen meeting, possibly the first meeting in May, as that's the meeting just before National Drug Prevention Week. And, you know, let us know what they're doing and update us on their progress, because they're working really hard over there. And also, I wanna remind everybody of my office hours, a week from today, next Tuesday, from 5:00 to 6:00, right next door. And I guess that's all.
Okay. Do you wanna coordinate with Elaine to get that on the agenda for our next meeting?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Alright, just a reminder, in the month of February, the town administrator evaluation sheets have been distributed. You should be working on completing those. And then during March 1st to the 20th, we all should try to schedule an appointment to sit down and meet with the town administrator to discuss our individual evaluations and goals and objectives. They should be turned in to Elaine on March 22nd. And then, we need to schedule an executive board meeting. I know one of the members has mentioned that April 2nd may not be good for them, so we'll work on making sure that we get a date that works for everybody, for that, we said April 2nd, but that we can move that to something that can be accommodated. And then, we originally were talking April 23rd for the public discussion of the town administrator evaluation, but that may well turn out to be town meeting, or not, we don't really know. So we might wanna change that date, just because there's a possibility it could be the second night of town meeting. So why don't we put reconsideration of dates up on the next, and I'll work with you, Elaine, to try to come up with some alternatives for both of those. Alright, and that is all I have, so that we will turn next then to the minutes of January 28th. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we approve the minutes of January 28th.
There a second?
Oh, second then.
Further discussion?
Just one thing, under the comments I had about the discussion, questions from the Board of Selectmen, there were four specific questions that I asked the police station building committee.